...for the blood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Rollcall, please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Here.
And Mayor DeHore.
Here. Consent and approval motion, public motion.
Councilor.
Discussion of changes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right. Public comment.
Perry Beecham, 924 R. West Drive. Had a couple of comments. They're really questions, but... The coffee with council was Saturday, and I attended. And I had a few questions and didn't quite... They didn't know the answer. And that's on my second part. This is... I just would like to know what... Why the change? What for what reason? And I know it was all done legally. It was posted, et cetera. But if you go to your meeting on December 4th, it was moved by Groves and seconded by Salzweedle that if a holiday falls on Monday, city council will not meet that evening for the meeting. It will be moved to the next day. You go to back and then in January 2nd, you had your regular board meeting. It was in your consent agenda, approve the 2024 meeting dates. And they're all listed here. And it has... The meeting date has February 20th, a Tuesday, because the 19th was President's Day. The other is, in talking to the council members that were in attendance, they had said they were assuming it was going to be on Tuesday. They didn't know until Sunday night that they got noticed or heard that they read or found out that it was actually going to be on Monday. I also point out in the ledger, it writes, however, nobody... This has to do with the special vote. It was announced on February 5th meeting. The city council held a public hearing to consider the application of King Milling for an industrial facilities tax credit. However, nobody showed up for the public comment. I'm going to propose that nobody showed up because the city council had said that the meetings were going to be on Tuesday. So that's just... And again, I'd like to know what changed from December... December when you voted on this and in setting the dates on January 2nd meeting? The other in the ledger was preferred vendor. And I would just like to know, and in that, Eric asked about the preferred vendor. And it states and said, because it didn't go out for bid, I understand that. Manager Burns responded that Peerless is a preferred vendor, and the city does not go out for bids when a preferred vendor is involved. My question is, what... How does one become a preferred vendor? How does one... Who designates that? Is there a routine evaluation every few years? Or once you're a preferred vendor, you're on it for life? Because I believe that occasionally, I understand why preferred vendor, but occasionally, I think you need to at least go out and get quotes, not necessarily bids, but just make sure that those preferred vendors are not taking advantage, knowing that their preferred vendor, that a bid would never go out, would never... Would not be sought by the city. So those are just kind of my questions. Thank you.
You can or you can't.
So, real quick. So when we, at that meeting, when we did change the dates, we also stated that by going to 410s, when we went to 410s, we were going to be open on President's Day. And we were going to treat it as a normal day. So that was my understanding when we set the date change to the meeting, because we were open on President's Day. We operated like a normal day. And going forward, we're going to keep President's Day as a normal day. Because we also, we had Martin Luther King Day where we switched it and had the observed holiday. I confirmed that with the mayor. And the form that you said, yes, it did state the date. The date with... The form also with the council pack went out after I went on vacation. So I did not approve that. That being said, underneath it, it specifically states, "Check the website for any changes in dates," which is specifically said. In addition, we notified it on our calendar way ahead of time. We posted it in our newsletter. And we posted it in the ledger for the special notice meeting. So that's what happened, and that's the way it's going to be. In regards to the preferred vendor, preferred vendors most of the time are because it's the original... They're the only people we can get the part from. So for example, this Peerless issue, they are the only people we can get the part from. There's a number of things that we come across that are preferred vendor because they're the only ones that we go through. Because if we have to change someone else, then it creates eventually an additional cost for the city. We've had issues in the past where we could have gone out for bids on things, but we would then have had to have hired an engineer, which would have been an additional cost to the city, which frankly, that's my call. And if I believe it's in the best interest to go through the preferred vendor route, I have that authority under the purchase policy in our ordinances to do that. And I'm going to make the best decision, I believe, for the city.
I agree with you. I'm just asking, I was just asking, how does one become a preferred vendor?
Most of the time, it's because it's the only place we can get the stuff from. That's really it. Because we have a lot, like for the water plant, there's a lot of things that we can only get up through one supplier. So that's usually how we do it.
Anybody else?
PM Romley, 804 East Main. I would like to welcome Eric. I may have a chance to come into the city council. I know you'll do a good job. Is it okay if I say something about the Avery Street expansion right now? Because I don't want to come back up. It's okay if I address that real quick?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay. Basically, expanding 18 inches with that Avery is really purely and simply government overreach. I don't know, I haven't seen the plans. But if it does involve invading people's properties, like driveways, lawns, or trees, it violates their filler rights. It's just government overreach, period. And 18 inches will not alleviate the congestion and the nightmare increase of traffic on a small residential street. It's government overreach, it's just period. This is totally unrelated. So I have a question, and who can answer it? If you can't, maybe you can direct me in the right direction. But my question is, did anyone from our city government sign a non-disclosure agreement or any type of a contract with Copper Rock?
No.
All right, let's get to it. So continuing on. So no one is really telling anyone that Copper Rock site plan was destined to be approved no matter what cost. Costs mostly being affecting the residential law. That being said, watching the process unfold, I realize how crucial it is for our city council members, as well as our planning commissioners, to do their due diligence. What I mean by that is the city council is and has been responsible to hire certain individuals, appoint commissioners, and contract certain companies. We elected you and we pay you to do your own research and at times, challenge those who give you advice. And most importantly, listen to the people that you represent. An example of... There's an example, many, but one that I can give you is that when the planning committee was discussing the Copper Rock site, basically, all we heard was, Andy, what do you think? Andy, what do you think? Andy, what do you think? And I had already used up my three minutes, timed three minutes. But I really wanted to say, no commissioners, what do you think? Now, we asked commissioners more than twice to come out to the site to personally see what was going on. They didn't do it. If they would have, they would have realized how non-sustainable Avery Street is for traffic, parked cars, et cetera. Even with an extra 18 inches added on. And Bob and I went and measured it this weekend. We had a car park, there's a car park to process, it's going to be a nightmare, so... But I still don't see how 18 inches is going to make a difference, especially if it's going to infringe on people's property. For your information, after the planning committee approved Copper Rock's plan in October, we contacted several attorneys who specialize in zoning law. After we provided them with the information on the master plan, the city ordinance, and the site plan standards, they all saw many reasons to appeal the planning committee's decision. But... Wait, 30-day appeal period had already passed. We had no clue we had a 30-day window. Now, maybe not legally, but ethically, we should have been told that. But now we know. Words can be deceitful and silking science. An example of that is, after the site plan was approved, Chair Barker said something to the effect, well, if the traffic gets too bad, we can always put in a roundabout, traffic lights, stop signs, pure silence. And I know for a fact, there were several people that sat up here that have talked to M.D.O., may know better. It took years and years for M.D.O. to put that four-way stop in Saranac, M-21, and Marson Lake. And I'm sure there were a lot of bad accidents that hadn't happened in the meantime. Additionally, you know, I heard that, you know, we want to become a Pontiac, you know, double our population. And last I checked, we don't have extra land. So we're going to be piled on top of each other with no roundabouts or traffic lights, whatever. It's unrealistic. And one more thing I'd like to mention. Last year, when the vote rescind the original vote on Horatio Street was scheduled, we showed up. But neither did Jessica Wood nor Copper Rock was there. We were told the vote would take place at the next meeting. Two weeks later, both the Copper Rock operatives and Jessica Wood were there. So obviously, they were given a heads up, don't show up. Nobody told us. Granted, Bob and I live just down the road, but really, I think our time is valuable, too. So in conclusion, I guess, I'm just going to say this. Pose a question, and it's kind of emotional for me, but, you know, what about us? What about the people that live here now?
Anybody else? All right. LCTV grant recommendations in item one under important business. Dennis says, I'm going to call old business.
Really observation. Dennis Kett, 1700 Faith Drive. I am chair of the Lowell Cable TV Board. And I'm here representing the board and going over our recommendations to the council. I can go through these. We had 13 projects we selected. We had about $142,000 to spend. And we got in applications totaling basically double that. So we had to make some decisions as a board. And so I'd make those go through these and answer any questions that we have. We funded the Lowell Cable TV administration through the city. We funded or recommending funding the park upgrades with the city. We removed the floor and we kept the door replacement in, but not the floor upgrades. Historical Society, Alsburg Historical Society. We talked about that a little. Took the tree removals out. And some of this we did, just kind of to balance the capital and the maintenance definition a little, but also just because we had to, we had to try to fit within the money we had. So that went... That was reduced to just cover more non-maintenance type items. We funded the First Congregational Church. The church's request for electrical upgrade, as they requested. However, that, as we did last year, that funding will need to go through another qualifying agency which they partner with. And I think that can be worked out with the city council. Lowell Chamber of Commerce, we prioritized, or they prioritized their two requests, and we agreed. We're recommending funding the bleachers for about $10,000. Lowell Historical Museum for lights and camera security. Cameras, $5,300 for that project. Lowell area fire department, $7,290 for power backup lights. Lowell area schools, audio upgrade for their performing arts center. And we did not... We reduced their requests, again, just to try and fit it within what we had. To $20,000. Lowell County Township, Splash Bad, $15,000. They appeared to have most of the funding raised for that. So we agreed to that. Also, the Lowell Open Table Kitchen Supplies, $3,000. We are recommending that. Lowell Women's Club, veterans, pillowcases for veterans for a walking, $500. We decided that was not reasonable to ask. Let's see. Rotary Club, rebuild Creekside Kingdom. We had some discussion about that, but it appears that they're very close to funding that, raising the rest of the money, which there is, you know, there's quite a bit with that one, plus a couple others also. So because that was, looked like it was close to being funded, we agreed to $40,000 for that to recommend. And cemetery improvements in Virgin's Township. Recommended that to the council. Again, we had some discussion, and we did not recommend a couple of projects that were more, that were basically staff expenses as opposed to capital expense. We did not fund those. Let's see. Church of the Nazarene, we did not recommend because it was... Our observation was solely for a church as opposed to First Congregational, so we did not fund that one. And Lowell Arts, at this time, they had requested a handicap ramp at their front entrance. We noted that they have one on their rear entrance, so that didn't appear to be as critical at this time. Again, we were kind of running out of money anyway. And the one that I think we probably need to have a little more discussion on over the next year is the housing project for Fromm. We did not allocate any funding to that because their ask was quite large. The whole program is, I think, $3.3 million. They were asking for $50,000. And it just, it appeared that this was a program that would go over, for a number of years. And we had some opportunity to, maybe to look at that again. Again, I think we have the, maybe as a group, have kind of a bigger discussion about what we do with, you know, these major asks that potentially, you know, have funds or more. Whether that's the best use of the funds, whether it really makes a dent in the project. But yeah, that's pretty much what we had. 142 is a little higher than usual because last year, oddly enough, we did not have enough applications to use up all the money. So that, I'd like to... That's our recommendations to the council. I'd like to thank the Cable TV Board for their work on this and their commitment to this. And the applicants, many of these are good applications, and people are free to resubmit them. And Sue and her people for helping to keep the meetings operating and keeping our supplies intact. That's our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
The First Congregational Church, it has a lot to do with senior neighbors and we've given to senior neighbors in the past. If everybody took a building and don't know the lighting, or this hopefully helps them with the auto lighting turning on and that the Guild of Club, that comes in and utilizes the church. Another thing I'd like to know about the fire department, the scene lighting is actually for lighting behind the scenes. They always seem to have it up in front of the trucks. But with all the hoses and everything else that's behind the scenes, they can't see it very well. And so this will definitely help them light up the back of the scene and you don't think about when you're there. So it was a good cause of getting at the fire department, so.
All right. Any questions for Dennis?
I do. First of all, thank you for this group to spend Saturday morning going through this. So thank you to Mark and Jim and Amanda. Can you clarify your note that churches should not be considered? I'm a little confused on the notes that at one point, churches, the attorney said that churches shouldn't be considered. But then, does it have to do with multiple purposes?
Well, it's... As the guidance is written, the ordinance is written, the decision or the guidance from the attorney was that we should not be funding churches directly. So the times that we have funded churches, we have funded basically items that have gone through other agencies that happen to be in, you know, using the church rather than the church itself. So that's been...
I'd like to add that over to this. We've been doing this now for 16 years. And the community has changed, Eric. I mean, now, we're, we used to have the Guild of Club, senior neighbors had their own place. And now they've moved into new locations and things like that. So, and things are changing really rapidly. You see more and more churches reaching out, being part of it. I mean, Methodist Church has things going, you know, everyone does. So when we met, there was a lot of conversation that the board had regarding this. And then we finally got to the point where we would accept work done at a church, but would have to go through one of the 501(c)(3) charity things in town at this point. So that's kind of why we decided to go that way, to help them out. Hope that helps answer your question, if it doesn't.
I think that's good. Thank you.
All right. Motion then to accept the Endowment Fund recommendations. Support. Any other discussion?
Mayor DeHore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Dennis. New business, Division and Avery Engineering.
With the approved development of the old rollover site, the city staff looked at repaving Division Street from Main Street to Avery and Avery Street from Division to Grove. The road is a hazer rating of one, if below is rated possible from Avery to Horatio, at a rating of two from Horatio to Grove. Division Street from Main to Avery has a hazer rating of four. In addition, the city has been aware of water reliability issues in this area. Many of the properties on Avery have to connect their water to the main that is on Division and also on East Main. According to our water department, the lateral lines connecting to the main on Division are like spaghetti. Connecting a new water main and connecting the properties along Avery will provide greater reliability and flow to those homeowners and property owners. I have had a council member express concern to me about the possibility of widening Avery near the area of the rollover by at least one and a half feet. Our city engineer, Williams and Works, has expressed that there is right of way to make this possible. If there is interest in engineering this, I can have Williams and Work present this to you as an option prior to bidding. The estimated construction cost for the project were $523,000. $206,458 can be funded from the water fund as these are water-related expenses. If we move forward, I would budget this project from our approximate $1.63 million captures, which is equivalent to 425 days' cash on hand in the fund. Originally, we discussed the possibility of utilizing fund balance for the road component of this project. As proposed, development is one of only six properties in the city from which the general fund captures increased tax revenue. With the recent notification, the city received approximately $473,000 in marijuana excise tax. This is $223,000 additional revenue that was budgeted for this fiscal year. If you're aware, the city contributes $150,000 in general fund revenue, along with all marijuana excise tax revenue to the local street fund for road improvements. This year, $623,000 will be transferred from the general fund to the local street fund for improvements. I have looked at seven-year street plan along with the revenue forecast that I established, and I believe we can add this project ex-fiscal year without delaying any projects currently in the plan. I should mention that doing this doesn't delay any projects in the plan. I was also able to move Jackson to be repaid in the summer of 2025 rather than summer of 2026, which was originally planned. Attached to proposal for design engineering from Williams and Works for this project, the total design engineering cost is $38,000. 39.4% of $14,972 we paid for from the water fund, and the remainder would be paid from the local street fund. This project will address many infrastructure concerns brought to the city's attention over the summer months last year. The city needs traction out of receipt.
All right. Any discussion on it? So if we wanted to, if we weren't sure about widening, they would come in?
I would have...
As part of their engineering?
I would ask them to come in and show me. Before we even go over that.
All right. So that'd be included in that engineering work price either way, right?
Yeah.
And then the construction cost changes based on what we decide? Or just minimum?
No, we've took that into account in the engineering cost, in the estimate cost.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're already, yeah, you're looking like, we're looking at, I mean, it is right of way, so we do control it right of way. So it was accounted for.
All right. Any other discussion?
I do. I have some comments. Number one, I walked the road today, and yes, there are some bad sections, but it's not nearly like Jackson or Washington. So I understand it will need to be done, but I'm going to question the timing a little bit here. Second of all, does, should this wait until the, if the Copper Rock development does go through? And I don't quite know the timing, but should this wait until after that is finished so that we're not tearing up the roads twice? Number one is a question. It's stated that this work would be done next fiscal year, so that'd be 2025. I think the Copper Rock construction very likely will be damaging the road after that. So I'm a little concerned about that. Next is, does Copper Rock need this, the Copper Rock development? Does it need this new water line? Or can they, can they build with what is existing there?
They have the option, they could connect off the water line or they could connect off Main Street. It was more of an issue for the houses on the north side of the street, the water line that was coming down Avery.
Sure.
So you have, I mean, they could. It's an option. But they already have, there's already adequate flow off Main Street. There's, I believe, was an eight-inch line on Main, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Good to know they don't need this. Next, the...
But the first, you want me to answer the first question?
Yeah, as far as timing?
Well, so they're going to start construction once this court stuff is approved. So it makes, I mean, there's two schools of thought. We could do it while they're doing the construction, or you could wait till after they're done. It's really up to you what you want to do on that. It really, it really doesn't, it really, it really doesn't matter one way or another. They, they would like, obviously, they want to start as soon as they can.
Sure.
But if we, if you want to wait until after to even engineer and then go out for bid, that's well within your right. That's, so it's up, it's up to the council.
Fair enough. Then the foot and a half widening, and I know you'll look into that more. But on the north, you're, if you expand 18 inches, there's some huge, nice trees that will have to be removed. And the yards, the front yards to the north are nice, but they're small. They'll get smaller, so that's a concern that we should check with the residents. Going to the south, there's garages along the south. The driveways for those garages are just barely wide enough for a park. So the whole widening is, I'd like that thought through before we approve that. And we said we'll talk about that later.
I mean, the other option you can obviously do is not widen and just put no parking down the street. That should accommodate some certain... That should accommodate some concerns as well.
Right.
That's another option.
Okay.
But I mean, there's, there's multiple, I mean, if you want to move forward, that's, you know, either option could be, could be present.
And then, just, I'm going to ask about money here a little bit, and I know we're concerned about the, the Washington financing and the debt coverage ratio. We need to keep so much cash in order to borrow and we're borrowing four point two for Monro, at least four million for Washington. So there's going to be a lot of borrowing and we're going to need quite a bit of cash for that debt ratio, so we...
So, so this is actually, this, capital projects don't impact the cash ratio, the debt ratio. So if we use fundraiser, which is what I'm proposing, it has no impact on the debt ratio. Actually, if I actually included this as a capital project on, as part of the rate structure, our rates would go up higher than whatever they would be. So we use cash on hand, that's why I have, I have a couple of projects that I have slated in, like it's right now on the budget that I would pay cash on hand on. We can get our, we still can get our cash on hand, even by doing them, we'll still get our cash, cash on hand way above two hundred days' cash to do those capital projects. When I present the budget, I'll present that. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact the debt, it would specifically not impact the debt ratio because we're not using the date, the rate structure to, to fund the project, we're using the reserves.
Yeah, and we have to have like two hundred days of...
You need nine.
Ninety days.
You can have nine. You can have, I mean, we're at four twenty-five right now.
Right now.
I mean, you're, you really should, should do some cap, if you're going to do some capital projects, we have some, we have enough smaller capital projects in addition to Monroe and Washington that we need to, you know, we need to draw down some of that cash. And so I have, I have, you know, between water and sewer, I have this project, I have a water line and sewer line on Kent Street and also the, the work on Jefferson. The Kent one, I'm still debating whether or not we'll do that one, but, but this one, this one we could do if, if you went forward.
From what I understand, we're really good on cash at this point regardless of where it's at here, the water, sewer.
We're, we're good on cash. The issue, yeah, the issue obviously is just the fact that we do have, you know, we do have quite a bit of, we do have quite a bit of obviously debt because we've taken out a lot of debt, but we're also, I mean, we're, I'm working with Warren Kramer right now, our financial advisor, and also doing the, you know, conferring it with Michigan Royal Water to make sure we're doing everything correctly.
Yeah. I, I listened to Eric, I didn't think about it beforehand, but, but I, I maybe knew as he says him about, about putting the brakes on this a little bit and waiting to see what, what happens before we go on. I'm not opposed to spending a little bit of money to, to get the design engineering done.
I mean, you know, if you wanted, you could at least do the engineering and then not do anything until it's resolved and at least you, you know, at least then have it.
And that, that price is good for a year, maybe ninety days, twenty days from Williams and Works once we're done.
Probably. Well, if we approve the engineering, then...
What I'm saying, but then once they get us the...
The construction.
Yeah, they'll get you, yeah, they'll get you, they'll probably get you up to it, that's the right.
Okay.
In conclusion, I'm just, as I'm learning all the financial ins and outs of the city, there's, you know, the, the MERS financial position is a concern, the, the huge unknowns for the I-96 development, what, if any, that will financially impact the city. And so I, I just want to ask, if we do this work, is it going to increase the water rates? And if we don't, if we delay this work, I mean, eventually this road needs taking care of it, but if we delay it, can we use this, this two hundred and twenty-three extra money that we receive? Can we do that to pay the interest on Monroe and Washington or something? Or could we pay that down into our debt?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could, you have the option. I mean, you don't necessarily have to put the water line in. If you don't put the water line in, you just pave the road and we already have the marijuana funds available for that. I mean, so you don't have to put the water line, it's just, it's a, it's a reliability tool and it makes it a little bit better in that area, but you don't, you are not obliged to do it.
So I don't...
But I'm not going to pay twice if we have to do it down the road.
So that's the thing, is once you, once you put the road in, you made the decision, you're not, you're not doing it.
The whole discussion with the Sawgrass program was to do it all at once.
Right.
So we're not redoing the streets twice. And I don't think we've come this far to start cutting corners and taking the cheap way out of the road.
And we did a, a hazard rating, right? So we, a long time ago, Eric, we looked at everything and that's how we prioritize how a road or when a road needed to be done. There were some way before others, even though they look worse.
Infrastructure.
Architecture under, you know, all your sewer water, it was in a lot worse shape, so that would put them ahead. I think when we talked about Avery, it was how the water mains have been in there a long time and I believe one of them actually...
There's, there's no water main on Avery.
The way the waters run.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, it's all over.
And one actually runs across somebody's property to get to a home, so, you know, that shouldn't be...
And, and I'm not sure we've had a lot of citizens complaints or concerns about their water on Avery.
No, it's been more of a...
I don't know.
My staff has brought this one to my attention more with the, with the flow and reliability issues. I mean, if, if you, like I said, it makes, you don't want to, you don't want to pave the road in and then put the water line.
Yeah.
But you're under an obligation to put the water line, if that better explains it.
But why would we stray from what we've been doing?
I agree.
We've been consistently repairing roads, consistently getting ahead of schedule, consistently fiscally conservative and smart with our money, thanks to you. So why would we take a corner-cutting approach now, three years into what we're trying to do?
I'm just trying to watch out for our rates, our water rates. That's the number one complaint that I heard during the campaign was about the water rates and I'm just trying to watch out for that. So this, to me, doesn't need done immediately. That's my opinion.
All right. Well, we are here to talk about the engineering side of it, so let's get it to a vote. I move that we approve the division and Avery engineering.
I'll support.
Discussion? Let's vote. Sue?
Councilmember Salswedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
No.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes. Chief?
Police vehicle sale. I apologize for being late. I had twenty Boy Scouts downstairs, all with ten parents, I ran over, so. We are, we are requesting the council, I didn't make last name either, so, so I'll stay late. We are, the department's requesting to sell our 2015 GMC Acadia. This vehicle was purchased a couple of years ago for Sergeant Lauren and I'd used for conducting salvage inspections. It's used to pay for the vehicles from our salvage inspection fund. Because the state has changed the laws on how to do salvage inspection, we don't do them anymore because it puts more liability on the inspector and we just didn't want to deal with that. So we don't use the car anymore. In fact, we had to purchase a battery just to get it started, to get it decommissioned because we had equipped lights and a radio. And we'd like to try to sell this car because we do equip the new car that's downstairs. We still need to purchase the electronics for us, the laptop, the printer, the radar and the in-car camera. And this is an incorrect figure I put on here, I just noticed it's not going to be ten thousand dollars, it's going to be more of a, right in the ballpark of five to six thousand dollars for that equipment. And we're hoping to get at least that much out of the Acadia so that we can purchase those pieces for the car so that when it's ready to be outfitted, we just give the, our outfit of the box apart, so we can use the rest of it, so we can get it all put together.
All right. Any questions for the chief? You want a motion to approve the sale of the Acadia?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salswedall.
Yes.
Easy enough. Yep. Mike, sidewalk required.
Nathan Voice has submitted a letter to the council requesting sidewalks not to be required for a garage he is building at E-25 Shepherd Drive. Per section nineteen twenty-six of the city's code of ordinances, it states the owner of any property within the city upon with a, which a new residential, commercial and industrial building is to be constructed shall in conjunction with such construction, construct sidewalks and any necessary retaining walls and driveway approaches in a public roadway adjacent or abutting such properties as shall be required by the city manager at the time the building permit is issued for such construction. All such required structures shall be completed prior to the issuance by the city of a certificate of occupancy. Your direct, direction for the council is requested. Nathan is here tonight if you have a question.
Same thing that we just had with Mafia.
Correct. His is a little different because there is no sidewalk up there and it's on a hill.
Yep, I'm going up there.
Yeah. So it's up, I mean, it's up to you if you want to handle that.
I just, I just know I'm planning, if you came, you know, if they had to go through planning, sidewalks would have been put on because we're making every place.
They would, yeah.
I just have them to eventually get everything.
It's not Mafia where we just...
There are some west side.
Yeah, but not where, right. But a sidewalk is dead ending and there's nothing there, unless the other...
Well, I think that would be the only sidewalk out there. And like you said, it's on the hill, so.
Yeah, but there is no sidewalk on, on Shepherd, or, I'm sorry, yeah, Shepherd.
All right. Anything else you want to do?
You're planning?
Yeah, no, no, I'm good if you did not put the sidewalk up there, I don't, it's on a hill, it would have been flat or something different, but, and you look at the grade of the property and all that, so I'm good with allowing it not to get the sidewalk at this time because it doesn't look like anybody in the near future is going to put any more sidewalk up there.
I'll second what you're saying.
You're going to make a motion to approve the exemption?
Yes, I'll make a motion and we approve.
All right. Any discussion, questions for Nate? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
No.
Councilmember Salswedall.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
All right. Lee of Boarding Commission report.
Mike? Finding commission, we have a new chair and a new co-chair. Tony Ellis will be our new chair. Mike?
You do.
You do, thank you.
You're welcome.
Will be our new co-chair. We don't have a meeting coming up this month because there wasn't anything on the agenda, so we'll try again. We are looking for one more board member. Bruce did resign last, last meeting we had here, so we need a replacement. So if anybody would like to step up, be part of the planning and help us with the new master plan, we're all for it. And then we have one individual tonight that would like to do it, so.
I might be able to help you with that.
I know.
One of the many services I offer. Jim?
I have nothing.
Eric?
I have Laura and the Arbor Board this week and the Historic Board has been canceled, so I'm late.
Late. Fire authorities in two weeks.
Yes.
Yep. And BBAs this Thursday, right? Okay, I got nothing else. Mike, manager report.
Couple items. I've been working pretty much nonstop last couple of weeks on budget, getting, getting ready for the next upcoming fiscal year. Something to think about, we need to have our budget work session. We do not have, we are, we are off on Monday, April twenty-second to Monday, April twenty-ninth. Was hoping to have a budget work session, one of those nights. Something also to add, we probably at some point are going to have to have a special meeting to approve all of the financing for Washington Street. I don't have that date set yet. I'm not there yet, but wanted to know which ones for the budget works that work better for the council.
Is it Mondays?
Yeah, I make, I make sure they're Mondays.
You do.
What were the dates, sorry?
Either Monday, April twenty-second or Monday, April twenty-ninth.
The twenty-second was better for me.
Twenty-second? Twenty-second worked on?
Yep.
All right, we'll set the meeting for the twenty-second.
You are going to put that back together like...
Absolutely, yep, nope, I know.
Not going from the back.
Nope, we're going to go start from, we're going to start from one-on-one and we're going to go all the way through.
Imagine how fun it's going to be.
Okay.
I'll fly out on the nineteenth.
Jim's not going to be here that day. How do we want to handle that? Do we want to, do we want to do something else?
Can he zoom in?
You're leaving the nineteenth.
I fly out on the nineteenth, yes.
Where are you going?
Florida.
He might be able to zoom in because you're not delivering.
We're not taking an action yet.
Let me check on the city.
We're just getting information, so I would think you could zoom in. I mean, if that's good with you.
Yes, he might be in Disney.
Well, then you're on, if you're in Mickey Mouse series, can you please zoom in?
I, I, I'll, I'll do my best to zoom in.
All right.
Yep.
Otherwise, we've had it before, I think, two years ago I missed and I, because I was working and I just had a work session with Mike.
Also, it's part of the way, I can rearrange my schedule if maybe.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want me to, do you want to say the twenty-second then or?
Is there a way Jim can take us all to Florida and we can do it there?
Well, he didn't say no.
He didn't say no.
We do have four hundred and twenty-five days of cash on hand.
I take what I, I take back what I said about fiscal responsibility and...
Now, we're, we're, we'll make it work.
All right. And we can change it if we want.
I, I can't make every meeting.
No.
Washington Street, we will be opening bids next Wednesday and then we'll go from there. I'm doing a lot of work behind the scenes, obviously, with you to make sure the final life, everything is finalized in USDA. One of those is the rate analysis that we talk about, that I'm working with Warren Kramer on. Also, hopefully the federal government doesn't shut down because if the federal government